Good evening. I'll now call to order the City County Council meeting for Monday, February 24th, 2020, and we will begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Boots.
Please stand and bow your heads. O heavenly Father, on behalf of my brothers and sisters on this magnificent council, thank you for the privilege to serve our community. Thank you for the wisdom, courage, strength, humility, and integrity that all originates with you. In our dealings, I ask for your patience and wisdom to discern what is right from what is wrong. I ask that when disagreement exists, which it most assuredly will, may we pause and remember, we have all been brought here by our respective voters, from whichever party they hail, to pursue the greater and common good for the citizens of this great city of Indianapolis we all call home. I ask for your courage to empower us to lead our city in good times and in bad, and in these current times of violence and division, may we provide a sense of hope, unity, and opportunity. I ask for your strength to enable us to stand and fight for what is right. One day, we will stand before you, hopefully in the far distant future, and give an account of our lives while here on earth. So may you find in your eyes our actions and attitudes in the near future to be acceptable and honorable. I further ask for your humility to serve particularly for the oppressed, for the broken, for the weary. May we be your hands and feet to fulfill such righteous deeds. And may our deeds not be viewed as self-serving handouts, but as providing a hand up, hope and opportunity to those less fortunate. Finally, I ask for your integrity to inspire. May our sincerity and passion for public service serve as a model and catalyst for all our youth, our neighborhoods, our schools, our businesses, and our churches, to grow together in kindness for others, in cooperation with others, and in loving support of others. May our great city be served not because of us, but by what you are able to accomplish through us. I ask this on behalf of my brothers and sisters on this great council, in the name that is above all names, Jesus Christ. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible for all.
We have 24 counselors present. Counselor Jackson has asked to be excused this evening. The next item on our agenda is introduction of guests and visitors. Counselor Barth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize two of my district's seven constituents, both from the prosecutor's office, Ms. Pegg McLeish and our Marion County Prosecutor Ryan Mears.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce two fellow friends and board members of the Greater Allisonville Community Council, Ted Cotterill and Mo McReynolds, if they would stand, please. The Community Council is a community organization that represents 33 neighborhoods in our area in the northeast side of Indianapolis, deals with matters all the way from land use cases, neighborhood utility issues, school references, and political campaigns. Thank you, Ted and Mo.
Counselor Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, with this evening, I'd like to recognize Mrs. Karen Arnett, retired from the Enrath Police Department, one of his finest. Ms. Karen, would you please stand, please?
Counselor Maury.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to introduce a good friend of mine here this evening also on our agenda,
Counselor Graves.
Thank you, Mr. President. I recognize one of our far east side community activists in the audience, D. Ross of Ross Foundation.
I've got two individuals I wanted to recognize tonight, two by coincidence. One, Mr. Eddie Hager, who is a dedicated citizen to the city of Indianapolis, and the second is, I also noticed, D. Ross is in the crowd, and I've been working with D. on some initiatives here recently, and I just want to pay him some respect, and both of these gentlemen a lot of respect, so, thank you.
Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to acknowledge State Representative Robin Schachelfer, if she's still here.
Mr. Graves, you forgot someone?
No, but I do want to, I would be very, it would be unfortunate if I did fail to mention the members of the Lawrence Council that are present, joining us tonight.
The next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City County Council, Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Councils will be held in the City County Building in the Council Chambers on Monday, February 24th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before the regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob Osley, President, City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana, I caused to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Monday, February 10th, 2020, a copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal number 40, 2020, said hearing to be held on Monday, February 24th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. in the Public Assembly Room of the City County Building. Respectfully, Sarita Hughes, Clerk of the City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the Clerk of the City County Council, Sarita Hughes, the following ordinances. Special Resolutions numbers five through seven, Joseph H. Hockset, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is the appointment and reappointment of senior staff. The nominations are for senior staff, Yolanda Winfield, Assistant Clerk of Personnel and Finance, Angela Gonzalez, Assistant Clerk of Public Duties, Toa Kim, General Counsel, Scott Hall, Chief Financial Officer, and Brandon Hurgett, Policy Director, all of whom were referred to the Rules Committee. Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The reappointment of Yolanda Winfield, Angela Gonzalez, Toa Kim passed unanimously out of the Rules and Public Policy Committee. The appointment of Scott Hall and Brandon Hurgett also passed unanimously out of the Rules and Public Policy Committee. I move that we appoint all senior staff positions to the council.
Second.
The motions been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll actually proceed to the board for our vote. We will do by voice. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have consent? The next item on our agenda is approval of the journals for January 27th, 2020. Do I have consent? All right, so the next item on our agenda then is presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council resolutions. And the first one is proposal number 72, which honors Captain Karen Arnett upon her
Thank you, Mr. President. Fellow counselors, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, this is a special resolution recognizing a special person that made great contribution to our Indianapolis Police Department. Many years of service that she provided as an example for fellow officers to follow the lead that she so adequately provided in our Indianapolis Police Department, and the various command that she had in her service. So I will begin with this special resolution, Mr. President. This is a special resolution honoring Captain Karen D. Arnett upon her retirement from the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department.
Whereas Captain Arnett began her career with the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department as a civilian police dispatcher and control operator in 1980, she was sworn in as a recruit with the 65th Indianapolis Police Department Recruit Class in 1984. She has one son who was an Indianapolis Fire Department firefighter, and whereas Captain Arnett received her bachelor's degree from Indiana University and was selected as one of the 12 officers to host and participate in the Indianapolis Police Department's Exchange Program with the West Berlin, Germany Police Department. She was detailed to the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy for a 12-week period as a basic course trainer for the 139th Basic Recruit Class. Captain Arnett is also a graduate of IMPD Leadership Academy Session 2010 and the 47th Session of the Senior Management Institute for Police, SMIP, and...
Whereas during Captain Arnett's assignment at the Training Academy, she obtained instructor certification as an academy staff instructor and in Defensive Tactics, Advanced Emergency Vehicle Operations, and you're going to have to tell me that.
Manana, baton.
Baton. She later became the Driver Training Unit Supervisor responsible for the Department Drivers Training Program and Accident Review Board, and...
And whereas Captain Arnett is currently assigned to the Operations Division as the East District Day Shift Captain. She was appointed and served as the Downtown District Commander from 2010 to 2016, and was later assigned as Commander of the Northwest District and Criminal Investigation Division from 2016 to 2017. Additionally, assignments have included Downtown District Middle Shift, Day Shift, Community Relation Officer, Human Resource Recruiting Officer, Training Academy Staff, Internal Affairs, Branch Investigator, Northeast District Day Shift Field Lieutenant, North District Detective Unit Lieutenant, and Night Watch Captain. Now therefore be resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis, Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City County Council recognizes Captain Karen D. Arnett for her many achievements with the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department, and thanks her for her service. Section 2, the City Council congratulates Captain Arnett on her retirement and wishes her the best. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join this resolution by affixing his signature. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3-4-14. This special resolution was sponsored by myself and Mr. President. I hope I move for its adoption.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to hear from Deputy Mayor, please.
Thank you, Counsel Oliver. It's been such an honor to work with Captain and Commander Arnett. I know that if Mayor Hockset were here, he would certainly echo the same sentiments, but she embodies the excellence of IMPD as well as the diversity of IMPD. So Commander, Captain Arnett, congratulations on your retirement. You will be missed.
I don't have to say anything, do I? I'm only going to say a few words because I'll get pretty emotional, but I have really enjoyed my career. What Counselor Oliver, I don't know if it was in my bio, but I started out as a police dispatcher for IPD, so I don't think it's too bad from a police dispatcher up to a commander and now captain. But I do thank all of you. I have really been very fortunate with my career, and I've really appreciated working for the city and representing the Indianapolis Police Department, so, thank you.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 73, which recognizes Wish TV's Golden Apple Award winner, 7th grade teacher Nate Waterfill.
If Mr. Waterfill is here, if he has any family or friends that would like to join him, please come on up.
Whereas Nate Waterfill is a 7th grade teacher at Chapel Hill 7th and 8th Grade Center in Wayne Township Schools. And whereas Nate has shown compassion and empathy to all of the students that walk through his classroom door, he has gone above and beyond to make everyone feel included and loved, and...
Whereas Nate has opened up to his students and shared his experiences in order to connect with them. Battling cancer at a young age, growing up with foster siblings, adopting a sister of a different race, and encouraging a brother with a disability made him the kind, strong, and compassionate person he is today. And whereas Nate balances family time with his wife and son, the Young Men of Purpose Mentoring Program, coaching the Summer Soccer League, and takes charge of several school services projects. And whereas Nate was nominated for Wish TV's Golden Apple Award by numerous students and his school principal, Mr. Mark. Students expressed the many positive experiences that they've had with Mr. Waterfill. His involvement and dedication were saluted and celebrated by the numerous students and teachers who were present for his nomination, and whereas...
Nate Waterfill was awarded Wish TV's Golden Apple Award on Monday, December 9th, 2019. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis, of Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the City Council recognizes the life and contributions of Nate Waterfill. Section 2, the council extends its appreciation and gratitude to Mr. Waterfill and wishes him continued success in his future endeavors. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu, which he has done. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and full effect upon the adoption and compliance with Indiana Code 36-3-4-14. This special resolution was sponsored by Counselor Carlino and was passed by the City County Council on this day. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speaker.
I just want to say, as a teacher and as a mother, Jessica as well, to see, first of all, thank you to Wish TV for recognizing teachers. They're under applauded each and every day, and Mr. Waterfill is no exception. And so, on behalf of the City County Council, if Mr. Waterfill and his family would like to share some words, we would love to hear from him.
Please proceed.
Thank you.
Do you have anything to say, Dean? I just want to say thank you, first, to my principal right here, Mr. Mark. When I first interviewed in Wayne Township, I was completely bald because of chemotherapy and was having a hard time. Allison was pregnant with Dean right here, and Mr. Mark did not judge me. He did not view me as a liability. He viewed me as an asset. So he and Sherri Patterson, who hired me, I'll forever be grateful to them. I also want to thank my wife, because she really keeps me grounded and fuels me. The love that I receive from her and my son and from God is what helps me to love my students. All teachers know it's difficult some days, the things we have to report, the things we have to hear from students, the things we see in our communities can be hard, but God, as they say, keeps us motivated, keeps us fueled to face another day. Specifically, I serve a lot of immigrant students, a lot of English learner students, and I just wanted to say how much I love them and how grateful and fortunate I am to get to teach them every day. They are God's children, just as any other child is, and it's just the privilege of my life that I get to teach them every day.
There's two of them. One you can give to the school. And Mr. Waterfill, would you give him some pins for your family so you can remember the city? I must be appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 74, which recognizes the Chapel Hill 8th grade boys' basketball team as the 2020 Metropolitan Indianapolis Interscholastic Conference Champions.
So we're keeping it on the west side. We not only have amazing staff, but our student athletes as well. The 8th grade boys' basketball team, back-to-back Marion County champions, and of course we have them here with their families, their administrators, coaches, and cheerleaders tonight. You guys look good. Come on up. Come up here, yeah. Come on down. You want to come put their picture up here? Come over here. You can go up there. You can go up there. You guys are awesome. Okay, you start. I will take this one. Third one? Okay. City Council Special Resolution Recognizing the Chapel Hill 8th Grade Boys Basketball Team as the 2020 Metropolitan Indianapolis Interscholastic Conference Champions. Whereas, two years in a row, the Chapel Hill 7th and 8th Grade Center Boys 8th Grade Basketball Team has won the Metropolitan Indianapolis Interscholastic Conference Championship, proving themselves great athletes who were able to work together as a team to accomplish an incredible feat. And whereas the Giants defeated Creston Middle School, their nail-biter game gave them the win over Center Grove Middle School in the semifinals, leading to the championship game against Fall Creek Valley Middle School on January 25th, where they came out on top, 43 to 42, and...
Be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. The, section 1, the Indianapolis City County Council proudly recognizes the Chapel Hill 8th Grade Boys Basketball Team as the 2020 Metropolitan Indianapolis Interscholastic Conference Champions. Section 2, the council congratulates the players, cheerleaders, coaches, and staff on an incredibly successful season and wishes them continued success in all of their future endeavors, both collectively and individually. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu, which he has. And section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with Code 36-3-4-14.
On this day, Monday, February 24th, 2020, congratulations, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. President.
Mr. President, may we move to...
So move.
So move.
Thank you.
We're so excited.
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Mr. President, Vice President.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Okay.
Do we have a coach that would like to speak and maybe tell some super sweet stories about that nail-biting victory? We could get him through. Look at how amazing these young student athletes look. If we could just give it up for them one more time.
I mean, it looked pretty rough there for a little bit, but you know, because of our kids and the things that we focused on, next play and a really tough mindset and mentality, we were able to pull it out. Down 10 points in the fourth quarter, ended up coming back to win, so couldn't do it without any of the kids, couldn't do it without the support of my brother, who's an assistant coach with me, couldn't do it without the support of my wife over there either. And the kids and the parents and everything that they did, did a fantastic job. We really, really pushed that mindset, and without that mindset, we wouldn't be able to pull anything out, so, thank you very much.
Thank you for allowing me to do. We, thank you, Mr. President, for allowing you to speak on the floor. On behalf of these amazing student athletes, their coaches, the MSD of Wayne Township, and myself, thank you so much. Congratulations again.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 75, which supports the announced policy of the Marion County Prosecutor's Office to no longer prosecute simple possession of marijuana offenses.
This is City Council Special Resolution Number 11, a special resolution in support of the announced policy of the Marion County Prosecutor's Office to no longer prosecute simple possession of marijuana offenses. Whereas, in 33 states, including bordering states of Ohio, have legalized medical marijuana, and 11 states, including the bordering states of Michigan and Illinois, have fully legalized recreational use of marijuana, with several more states likely to follow suit in the near future, and...
Whereas, a poll last year by Ball State University's Bowen Center for Public Affairs found that 80% of Indiana adults favor medical marijuana use, with a mere 16% backing Indiana's current total prohibition of marijuana, and...
Whereas marijuana is one of the oldest agricultural commodities not grown for food and has been used medicinally all over the world since at least 2,700 B.C., and whereas the cannabis plant was previously grown widely in the United States and Indiana, was used commonly as a component in fabrics during the middle of the 19th century, and was manufactured, advertised, and sold as a treatment for a variety of ailments by merchants and pharmacies, including Indiana's own Eli Lilly and Company, until 1937, when the Marijuana Tax Act placed a large tariff on the production of cannabis. when the Marijuana Tax Act placed a large tariff on the production of cannabis, rendering its sale non-profitable, and...
Whereas, it was only in the early part of the twentieth century that marijuana began to be criminalized, mainly because of misinformation and hysteria based on at least, in part, on racially biased stereotypes connecting marijuana use in minorities, particularly African-Americans and Latinos, and...
Whereas, the same racial animus motivating enactment of these laws has also led to the racially unequal enforcement of such laws, which has had a substantial negative impact on minority communities. Thus, an American Civil Liberties Union study analyzing federal data found that blacks were at least three-point-seven times more likely than whites to be arrested for marijuana-related offenses, even though there is no discernible difference in marijuana usage between whites and non-whites, and...
Whereas, the collateral consequences of a conviction for marijuana possession and even for a mere arrest can be devastating and may complicate the obtaining of education loans, securing meaningful employment, maintaining a professional license, securing long-term housing, receiving government assistance, or even adopting a child. And whereas prosecuting minor victimless marijuana possession offenses involving an ounce or less of marijuana, with all the attendant collateral harms associated with such prosecutions, is unjust, harmful, and simply not good public policy.
And whereas, because of concerns that minorities in Marion County were being arrested disproportionately for marijuana law violations, and that continuing to prosecute the simple possession of an ounce or less of marijuana was draining valuable, yet scarce, public resources, such as tying up police officers and prosecutors in court proceedings and detracting from their ability to investigate and prosecute violent and other serious crimes, current Marion County Prosecutor Ryan Mears publicly announced on September thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, that his office would exercise its inherent prosecutorial discretion in no longer prosecuting cases involving the simple possession and non-public consumption of one ounce or less of marijuana, and...
Whereas... Since the announcement of this policy, more than three-hundred-and-twenty-five cases involving simple possession of marijuana have been dismissed by Prosecutor Mears' office with no discernible adverse effect on the public safety in Indianapolis. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section one, the Indianapolis Marion County City County Council endorses, ratifies, and supports the announced policy of the Marion County Prosecutor's Office to no longer prosecute simple possession of marijuana offenses involving one ounce or less, and to dismiss pending criminal charges filed against Marion County citizens for simple possession that qualifies for dismissal under this new policy. In section two, the council commends Prosecutor Mears for his commitment to racial justice, equity, and for his common sense and fiscally sound approach to law enforcement in our great city of Indianapolis, and I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President. And with that, I would like to have William Henry speak on behalf of this.
Thank you so much, councilors. Thank you to this council for even considering a resolution like this. This is very crucial to support such a tough decision by someone in a position such as Prosecutor Mears. My name is William Henry. I'm the I-Normal Chairman. We are the Indiana Chapter of the National Organization for the Reform of Marijuana Laws. Again, I want to thank this council for allowing me to speak on behalf of our organization and for considering this resolution. Of course, our organization absolutely supports this special resolution, and we ask that your support for all of these aspects that were said today be taken into consideration fully, and thank you so much for what you have done, Prosecutor Mears. Enough can't be said for such a decision to be made by a leader. We are surrounded by states now that allow this legally to their citizens for medicinal and recreational reasons. It makes no sense for us to continue to penalize and criminalize our citizens, and this will only impact them positively in the future. So, thank you so much.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number eighty-five, which makes a public commitment to addressing the historical inequities of race, place, and identity throughout city-county government.
This is a special resolution affirming appointment of a steering committee of municipal leaders tasked with developing a plan to end racial disparities in Indianapolis and directing city departments to use available tools to assist in the elimination of racial and social disparities across key indicators of success, including health, education, criminal justice, the environment, employment, and the economy, and to promote equity within the city workplace and in the delivery of city services. Whereas, legislation reforms such as the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four have been adopted banning discrimination because of a person's color, race, national origin, religion, or sex, and have supported progress towards racial and social justice, and whereas equality is enshrined in the founding documents of our nation as one of the highest ideas of American culture, yet race nonetheless can predict one's success of any and all indicators for success in Indianapolis and around the country. And whereas, black residents in Indianapolis are far more likely to be victims of violent crime than white residents, and are overrepresented in the city's population of homeless. Incarcerated persons are more likely to live in areas without access to adequate transportation or fresh food, nutrition, and whereas... Understanding the difference between equality and equity is important to ensure a public policy and resources are directed appropriately. Equity is not achieved by treating everyone equally. Rather, eliminating racial and social disparities requires that policies are implemented and resources distributed in a way that justly addresses the underlying issues and needs of underserved and vulnerable populations among us, and...
Whereas, income inequality is a root cause of many disparities we find in our community, and minority populations in Indianapolis are far more likely to be the victims of violent crime than white residents, and are overrepresented in the city's population of homeless and incarcerated persons, are more likely to live in areas without access to adequate transportation or fresh nutritious food, and...
Whereas, black and Latinx residents comprise one-fifth of central Indiana's population, but only a tenth of home loan applications, are twice as likely to be denied a mortgage as white applicants, and half as likely to own a home. And whereas, the poverty rate for black households in Marion County is more than twice the rate for white households, and the rate for Latinx households is almost three times the rate for white households.
Whereas, the median income for black and Latinx households is roughly sixty percent of the median income for white households, and whereas racial and social disparities for all minorities, LGBTQ citizens, and the very poor continue to exist across key indicators of success in Indianapolis, including health, education, criminal justice, the environment, employment, and the economy, and...
Whereas, good government is impossible without racial and social equity. People of all ages, races, faiths, origins, genders, and identities own our democracy equally and have an equal stake in its success, and...
Whereas, in 2019, more than one hundred local leaders from all three branches of local government, including Mayor Hogsett, members of his administration, members of our City County Council, members of the Marion Superior Court Executive Committee, countywide elected officials, leaders of local municipal corporations and criminal justice agencies, and representatives from anchor institutions IUPUI and Central Indiana Community Foundation were convened for a workshop with the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, and whereas...
Whereas, two dozen of those leaders, including representatives of this body, countywide elected officials, and leaders principals from the administration, the Marion County Prosecutor's Office, the Marion County Sheriff's Department, our municipal corporations, and the Marion Superior Court have now stepped forward to form a steering committee and assume responsibility for advancing the work to end racial and social disparities in Indianapolis, and embed in our collective DNA a commitment to addressing historical inequities surrounding race, place, and identity throughout Indianapolis, and whereas...
This council reaffirms its commitment to principles of equality and freedom for all people regardless of race, religion, sexual orientation, gender, ability, and national origin. And whereas, the City Council declares racism unjust, supports equal rights for all, and affirms the city's commitment to ending disparities based on race, place, or identity, now therefore...
Be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section one, the city-county government of Indianapolis can and will collaborate with partners to prioritize dismantling institutional and structural racism and bias and set our city on an accelerated path toward vibrant growth for all. Section two, the principles of inclusiveness and respect are values that can create a healthier and more productive workplace, improve customer service, and drive policies and outcomes that benefit the entire city. Section three, the steering committee is tasked with developing and implementing an infrastructure to further promote racial and social equity across both the city and county and within each department, so that these efforts are fully integrated into departmental work and into our policies, programs, and procedures. Section four, city and county departments should use all available tools to work to eliminate disparities based on race, place, or identity across key indicators of success, including health, education, criminal justice, the environment, employment, and the economy, and to promote racial and social equity in the delivery of city and county services. This work may include implementation of racial equity tools in budget, program, and policy decisions, including review of existing programs and policies. Section five, municipal systems that were created in the past to explicitly or implicitly maintain racial inequities will be redesigned and build to build and sustain equity around race, place, and identity for all residents of our beautiful city. Section six, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu. Section seven, this resolution shall be enforced and effect upon adoption and compliance with Indiana Code thirty-six, three, four, one, fourteen. The special resolution... This special resolution was sponsored by all councilors and was passed by the City County Council on this twenty-fourth day of February, 2020. I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. I will ask councilors, because this is such a special and important resolution, I will ask councilors to take a vote at their seats on the board, so that we can show our community that we are unified as a body behind this resolution.
Mr. President, if I could, I just want to thank you, Mr. President Osley, for leading this discussion. It started last year with GARE, and convened all of the city and county agencies to be a part of this initiative. So, again, I want to thank you and applaud you for your leadership. It's a new day in Indianapolis, Mr. President, and we appreciate you for beginning the discussion. Thank you.
Since the motion's improperly moved and seconded, we will proceed to the board for That motion carries twenty-four to zero. Counselors, thank you very much. And to all of our partners who are part of the steering committee, I also want to express our thanks. The next item on our agenda is proposal number forty-eight, which is referred to Municipal Corporations Committee. Chairman Gray. Are there any comments from councilors? Consent? All those in favor signify by saying... Forget that. Are there any comments, or are there any comments from fellow councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. All right, the motion carries twenty-four to zero. Are there comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number twenty-six, which is referred to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take proposals number twenty-six and twenty-seven together. Proposal number twenty-six approves the mayor's appointment of Thomas Cook as the chief deputy mayor. Proposal number twenty-seven approves the mayor's appointment of Angela Smith-Jones as deputy mayor for economic development. Both these proposals passed by a vote of twelve to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number twenty-eight, referred to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take proposals numbers twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty together. Thank you. Proposal number twenty-eight approves the mayor's appointment of Jeff Bennett as deputy mayor for community development. Proposal number twenty-nine approves the mayor's appointment of Dr. David Hampton as deputy mayor for neighborhood engagement. Proposal number thirty approves the mayor's appointment of Hope Trible as the director of the Office of Audit and Performance. Mr. President, I'd just add before the motion that all of these appointments are folks who have served the entire first term and are coming back to continue serving, which is something that's pretty uncommon as it relates to city government at this level. So they all passed by a vote of eleven to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number thirty-one, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take proposals number thirty-one and thirty-two together. Thank you. Proposal number thirty-one approves the mayor's appointment of Emily Mack as the director of the Department of Metropolitan Development. Director Mack appeared before the committee on Monday, February ten, two thousand and twenty, to seek approval for her reappointment and answer questions. She shared a PowerPoint presentation regarding her agency. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of twelve to zero. Proposal number thirty-two approves the mayor's appointment of Brian Madison as the director of the Department of Business and Neighborhood Services. Director Madison appeared before the committee on Monday, February tenth, two thousand and twenty, to seek approval for his reappointment and answer questions. He too shared a PowerPoint presentation regarding his agency. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of twelve to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number forty-nine, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take proposals number forty-nine and fifty together. Proposal number forty-nine reappoints Anthony Bridgman to the Board of Business and Neighborhood Services. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of ten to zero. Proposal number fifty reappoints Brian Barton to the Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. The proposal two passed out of committee by a vote of ten to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number fifty-two, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take proposals number fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five together. Proposal number fifty-two reappoints Ann Lear to the Indianapolis Historic Preservation Commission. Proposal number fifty-three reappoints Sally Cook to the Indianapolis Historic Preservation Commission. Proposal number fifty-four reappoints Karen Horstman to the Animal Service Advisory Board. And proposal number fifty-five reappoints Stacy Earl to the Animal Services Advisory Board. All proposals passed out of committee by a vote of ten to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number thirty-four, referred to Parks and Recreation Committee. Chairman Alder.
Parks and Recreation Committee met at Rodeo's Community Center on Thursday, February thirteenth. It was moved by Councilor Potts, seconded by Councilor Holliday to a vote of nine to zero. Recommend to do pass to this council. Proposal number thirty-four.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-three to one. The next item on our agenda is proposal number thirty-five, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal thirty-five, two thousand and twenty, approves the mayor's appointment of Paul T. Babcock as the director of Office of Public Health and Safety. Mr. Babcock stated that over the last four years, he has enjoyed work with the council to achieve a list of goals to improve the quality of life in the city of Indianapolis by working on food policies, criminal justice reform, homelessness, and violence reduction. Mr. Babcock stated that he hopes that his appointment is reaffirmed so he can continue to work with the members of the committee, other councils, and as well as the mayor's administration. Councilor Evans, Mr. Babcock said that the plan is for the staff to, Councilor Evans asked that what are the plans going forward for the Rubin Engagement Center and the Intervention Assessment Center? Mr. Babcock said that the plan is for the staff to be transferred as well as some of the operations to the assessment center. Councilor Evans moved, seconded by Councilor Oliver, to send proposal thirty-five to the full council with a due pass recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of eleven to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number thirty-eight, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal thirty-eight, two thousand and twenty, approves the mayor's appointment of Gina W. Bevan as the director of the Citizens Police Complaint Board. Ms. Bevan stated she had been on the job for eight months in her tenure as the director. She said the mission of the board is to enhance communication and goodwill between the citizens and the police department. Councilor Oliver moved, seconded by Councilor Evans, to send proposal thirty-eight to the full council with a due pass recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of eleven to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? Seeing none, proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number thirty-nine, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, President. Proposal thirty-nine, two thousand and twenty reaffirms the Marion County Public Defenders' Board nomination of Robert J. Hill as the chief Marion County public defender. Mr. Hill stated that he has been a public defender since nineteen eighty-five. He said that this is his twelfth time being confirmed as the chief public defender. Mr. Hill said that they have a staff of about two hundred and seventy-eight individuals, and the budget is growing. He said that they have appeared before the committee a number of times and have great work relationship with the council. Councilor Oliver moved, seconded by Councilor Evans, to send proposal thirty-nine to the full council with a due pass recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of eleven to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote.
Mr. President, I had abstained at committee, and I abstain now.
Very good. Thank you, Councilor Boots. The motion carries twenty-three to zero to one. One abstention. Thank you. Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is proposal number fifty-eight, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal fifty-eight, two thousand and twenty appoints Doris Smith-McNeil to Marion County Community Corrections Advisory Board. Councilor Evans moved, seconded by Councilor Muscarry, to send proposal fifty-eight to the full council with a due pass recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of eleven to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number sixty-seven, two thousand and twenty, introduced by Councilor Robinson, referred to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, approves an additional appropriation of one million, thirty-five thousand dollars in the two thousand and twenty budget of the Office of Audit and Performance Consolidated County General Fund to finance the high utilizers of multiple systems, HUMS, analysis and strategy project recommended by both reports of the two thousand and sixteen Indianapolis Criminal Justice Reform Task Force and the two thousand and eighteen assessment of the Marion County Sheriff's Office. Proposal number sixty-eight, introduced by Councilors Jackson and Lewis, referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, approves a transfer of two million dollars in the two thousand and twenty budget of the Department of Metropolitan Development Federal Grants Fund to fund additional acquisition costs of the Oak Tree Apartments and to fund additional recreational amenities at Willer Park and Kelly Park in partnership with the Department of Parks and Recreation through the LIFT Indy Initiative. Proposal number sixty-nine, introduced by Councilors Robinson, Boots, Barth, Evans, and Muscarry, referred to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, amends chapter two hundred and eighty-three, article six of the code regarding the crime prevention grant. Proposal numbers seventy and seventy-one refer to the Public Works Committee. Proposal number seventy, introduced by Councilor Johnson, approves the purchase of property owned by Don's Legacy, the second LLC, located near the intersection of Southeastern Avenue and Pleasant Run Parkway, North Drive, for the construction of a public works project. Proposal number seventy-one, introduced by Councilor Adamson, amends the code to require public work utilities to obtain right-of-way, I'm sorry, to obtain right-of-way permits in the right-of-way and the elimination of exception of public utilities from having to get permits from block parking. Proposal number eighty-three through eighty-four, referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Proposal number eighty-three, introduced by Councilor Osley, nominates Mervyn Enders for appointment to the Economic Development Commission. Proposal number eighty-four, introduced by Councilor Lewis, appoints Elizabeth Ellis to the Woodruff Place Economic Improvement Board. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is special orders, priority business. Looking at proposals seventy-six through eighty-two, which are rezoning ordinances certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission. If no councilor wishes to call down any other proposals for reconsideration, the proposals will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? Councilor Carlini.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that proposal number seventy-nine, two thousand and twenty, rezoning case eight-two-three located at eighty-one forty West Thirty-Fourth Street, be scheduled for a hearing before this council at our next regular meeting on March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty at seven PM, and that the general council read the announcement of such hearing and enter the same minutes of this meeting.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote.
We want to make sure we have the most appropriate proposal on the board. Okay, ready, go.
Okay. Sorry, we had a little error. Counselors, the motion's been moved and seconded. I would ask that we vote yes if we were in favor of Councilor Carlini's motion for reconsideration. Are we ready for the board? All right. All right, that motion carries twenty-four to zero. I believe there was another. Yes, Counselor McCormick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that proposal number eighty, two thousand and twenty, the rezoning case, two thousand and nineteen, CZN eight forty, located at eighty-one fifty Rockville Road, be scheduled for a hearing before this council at its next regular meeting on March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, at seven PM, and that the general council read the announcement of such hearing and enter the same in the minutes of this meeting. Thank you.
Motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. That motion carries twenty-four to zero. Council Kim, would you do us the honors of explaining this public hearing that has been requested?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This council will hold a public hearing on rezoning petition number two thousand and nineteen, CZN eight twenty-three, council proposal number seventy-nine, two thousand and twenty, which proposes to rezone twenty-three acres from the D-a-F-F-F-W district to the C-s-F-F-F-W districts to provide for an event center at eighty-one forty West Thirty-Fourth Street. And on rezoning petition number two thousand and nineteen, CZN eight forty, council proposal number eighty, two thousand and twenty, which proposes to rezone eight point eight-six acres from the C-three district to the C-four district at eighty-one fifty Rockville Road. The hearings will be held at the council's next regular meeting on Monday, March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, such meaning to convene at seven PM in these council chambers in the City-County Building in Indianapolis. Written objections that are filed with the clerk of the council shall be heard at such time, or the hearing may be continued as found necessary by the council. This concludes the announcement of a public hearing.
Thank you, Council Kim. The next item on our agenda is special orders, public hearing. Proposal number forty, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we have a companion proposal with number forty, proposal forty-one. We took them together in committee. However, one today, proposal number forty is a public hearing, and the forty-one is a special adoption. What is your pleasure on how you want to do those?
I would prefer that we separate those two.
Keep them separate. Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal forty-two thousand and twenty approves an additional appropriation of twenty-two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in the two thousand and twenty budget of the Office of Public Health and Safety, character three, to be used to contract legal and informational services for initiatives related to tenants' rights. Jeff Bennett, deputy mayor of Community Development of the mayor's office, and Matt Griffin, deputy director of legal counsel of OPHS, gave a PowerPoint presentation on the topic. Councilor Mallory stated that the eviction notice usually comes from the small claims court, so there has to be a valid reason for evicting someone. Mr. Griffin stated that this is true, but within the court system, a landlord will not be able to achieve an eviction unless they have grounds to do so based on a contract, but it does not prevent them from retaliation. Councilor Holliday asked if the landlord is retaliating against a tenant that will be brought up in small claims court. Mr. Griffin said that there is no law in Indiana to avoid an eviction simply because of the motive of the landlord lest there is discrimination based on a protected category. Councilor Grave asked how many members of the community this source would help. Mr. Bennett said that the data from the first eighteen months of Indiana legal services has helped over two hundred and fifty tenants that were facing eviction. Mr. Bennett also said that Indianapolis is limited on what they can do. Ironic. He said that they can inform tenants of their rights and empower them within assistance, financial or legal. He said that they have heard from the small claims court judges is that when tenants aren't represented, evictions can be avoided. Councilor Evans made the following motion to amend the proposal. As Councilor Jay Evans made the amendment to amend the proposal, the council, Muscarry, seconded the motion, and the amendment carried by a vote of eleven to zero. Councilor Oliver then moved, seconded by Councilor Muscarry, to send proposal number forty to the full council. The due pass recommendation as amended, the motion carried as a vote seven, three to one. Councilor Holliday, Mallory, and N.A. cast negative votes, and Councilor Boots abstaining from the vote. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All right, seeing none. All right, seeing none, I would like to have our public speak. Counsel Robinson.
Mr. President, we do have Mr. Giffen, the legal counsel for OPHS, and also Deputy Mayor Jeff Bennett, the artist. Do you want to have them speak before the public, or is that your decision as the president?
I'll take your recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Robinson. My name's Mac Giffen. I'm the Deputy Director and Legal Counsel for the Office of Public Health and Safety. Proposal 40 is the fiscal ordinance that provides $250,000 to my department, the Office of Public Health and Safety, to administer tenant assistance programs. $40,000 goes to a tenant information hotline to be administered by the Mayor's Action Center, and the remainder, $210,000, goes to Indiana Legal Services to perform two projects devoted to increasing tenant legal representation. One is the Eviction Avoidance Project, which is the continuation of work that they've been doing since late 2018, and the other is a new tenant legal assistance project that's being set up in conjunction with Proposal 41. And do you have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Very good. Did you also want Deputy Mayor Bennett?
No, I think Deputy Mayor Bennett. I'm sorry, Mr. President. Deputy Mayor Bennett indicated that Mr. Giffen, the corporation counsel, be speaking, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right. I'd like to hear from our clerk. I believe this is a public hearing, so I'm sure we have folks who have signed up to speak. Madam Clerk, could you read off names?
Thank you, Mr. President. John?
And that is our state representative, Robin Shackleford, is here, and unfortunately, she would have to leave, I think, due to a little bit of illness, and I'd like for her to come forward if she's still here first.
Thank you, Mr. President and council members. Tenant rights are an issue that have gone overlooked for far too long here in Indianapolis and across the state. In a city that ranks 14th in the nation for eviction rates, it's time that we stand up and implement some protections for Hoosier renters. The proposals that we are discussing tonight are protections that our families and friends deserve. This is why I'm speaking in support of Proposal 40 and 41, and I applaud the Mayor Hoxette and the council for your efforts. Proposal 40 gives us the funds needed to implement these much-needed protections because, according to the 2017 census, over 40% of individuals living in Indianapolis are renters. Proposal 40 sets the scene for Proposal 41, which ensures that our families are given their rights and responsibilities as a renter ahead of time. Proposal 41 ensures that tenants have access to legal assistance if needed, prohibits discrimination against renters if they have expunged or sealed criminal convictions, and protects tenants from retaliation if they exercise their rights. We have families here tonight that rely on renting their homes out as a source of income, and we have those that rely on renting a home or apartment because that's what fits their lifestyle. However, only one of those groups currently has the necessary rights and protections. This is not the first time I have spoken out about this issue. This session, I authored legislation to expand tenant rights for all renters in Indiana. When this bill was not heard before the deadline, I wrote to the Legislative Council and Governor Holcomb, educating them on the issue and urging them to assign it to a summer study committee. In addition, I'm authoring an amendment to remove the amendment added to Senate Bill which bans local governments from creating ordinances like Proposal 40 and 41 without the consent of the Indiana General Assembly. Indianapolis should be allowed to be a leader for tenant rights as we work to implement these protections all over Indiana. When problems like this are left unchecked, these rates grow and Hoosiers are left suffering like so many before them. We have to work together to create a system that works for all citizens throughout the city of Indianapolis and throughout the state. And in a city as strong as ours, no one should have to wonder where his or her family will sleep that night. I encourage you to continue and stay strong and continue this good fight. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you read out the first three names? And please set our timer. We will ask everyone to please keep their remarks to two minutes.
John Laramore, Casey Nielsen, Brett Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm John Laramore from Indiana Legal Services. We are the largest civil legal aid organization in Indiana. We are a nonprofit, and we provide free legal help to low-income people in all kinds of noncriminal cases. We have more than 30 lawyers here in Indianapolis on staff, and we represent more low-income tenants in evictions and other housing cases than any other organization. And we would be working under the proposal that's funded by Resolution or Proposition Number 40. Under this proposal, we would do two things. We would provide advice for tenants who are referred by the tenant information hotline because they have, who are calling because they have substandard conditions in their apartments. We would provide some representation to those individuals and coordinate representation by private lawyers who are donating their time. The second thing we would do is extend the operation of our Eviction Avoidance Project, which already has helped more than 250 Marion County residents who faced eviction in the last year, and kept evictions off the record of the great majority of those tenants, and connected many of them to helpful social services. And in conclusion, studies from other cities show that expenditures of this sort save money in the long run. A New York study showed that every dollar spent on eviction defense saved $2 in shelter costs alone, and a study from Philadelphia showed that every dollar spent on eviction defense saved more than $8 in public expenditures, not counting the tremendous cost to the families evicted that were saved when they were kept in housing. Thank you.
It might take me a minute, sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, counselors and guests. My name is Cassie Nielsen. I'm an attorney with Ruben Levin, PC, and with me is Brett Thomas of Hume Smith, Geddes, Green &amp; Simmons. Excuse me. Together, we co-chair the Indianapolis Bar Association Standing Committee on Public Outreach. In that capacity, the committee aids in partnering the Indianapolis Bar Association with various organizations and committees, and providing legal support towards community-based initiatives. The Bar Association does indeed pledge its full support of the ordinance currently before the council as a great stride towards much-needed reform in the area of tenants' rights and landlord-tenant law. This ordinance aims to obviously change the status quo, educating tenants and landlords at a granular level, while also providing needed assistance for those possibly facing eviction for exercising their rights. The calls to the hotline for which there's appropriated about $40,000 for tenants facing the issues would then be referred to the Tenant Legal Assistance Project, and the Indianapolis Bar Association has pledged its support to providing volunteer attorneys to take cases for residents facing eviction, living in inhabitable conditions, and other issues plaguing renters throughout the cities. These attorneys pledge their time, their resources, some at their own cost, to assist the cause in the rule of law and access to legal resources and justice. So if enacted, obviously, our committee, as well as the Indianapolis Bar Association, does pledge its full support and resources towards working to those initiatives. Thank you.
Julian Harrell, Carl Pepworth, Dee Ross.
Mr. President, councilwomen and councilmen, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Julian Harrell, past president of the Marion County Bar Association, and the MCBA for nearly the past 100 years has the sole mission of promoting fairness, justice, and equality. It's an honor to be here in the spirit of collaboration and unity with representatives of the Indianapolis Bar Association, Indiana Legal Services, and Fageri Drinker. And MCBA pledges its full support and resources to Proposal 40 and the Tenants Rights Initiative. Recognizing the inherent disparity in power between residential landlords and tenants is critical to the Tenants Rights Initiative. This initiative involves at its core what we deem to be a fundamental right, the right of access to habitable housing. Surely, this is an objectively noble and just pursuit. At a minimum, affording additional access to information and legal representation, which in many cases would afford protection to school-aged children, is a worthy and sound investment. James Baldwin recognized this notion when he wrote, "These are all our children. We will profit by or pay for whatever they become." By minimizing evictions in Indianapolis, we can help determine what our children become. Thus, Proposition 40 would, at a minimum, positively impact our children, and by extension, each of us. Therefore, Marion County Bar Association supports Proposal 40 as a step toward addressing unjust results stemming from antiquated laws that consistently work to oppress and harm vulnerable demographics.
Good evening. My name's Carl Pepworth. I'm a partner at Fageri Drinker, formerly Fageri Baker Daniels, formerly Baker and Daniels. I've practiced there since 1991. I'm a real estate litigator, and I'm going to augment what the bar association leaders have talked about. And when we were approached and learned about this initiative and the leadership that the council is showing here, we were asked if our firm would have interest in supporting this initiative in several different ways. Initially, would there be people interested in doing it? The answer to that is yes. So it's not an abstract question as to whether there's attorneys who are willing to volunteer their time as part of one aspect of this project. We have eight to 10 lawyers and some paralegals who are interested in doing that. Secondly, we're interested in supporting through training that initial group. And thirdly, I serve on the Coalition for Court Access, and as part of that role, being appointed by the Indiana Supreme Court, I've approached the other eight or nine largest firms in Indianapolis, and I believe there's going to be enthusiasm on the pro bono component of this for doing this once we've worked out the logistics. And so we're enthusiastic about the mayor's and the council's leadership in this area. I think there will be interest with the private bar providing the support. The importance of the proposal is it's going to provide the training that private bar lawyers will need. So I think to talk about how we leverage resources, there are tens of thousands of dollars of free legal time that will be, I think, generated by this proposal if it's adopted. Thank you.
My name is Dee Ross, founder of the Ross Foundation. Also, we oversee the Tenants Rights Union here in Indianapolis. For the last six years, we have done tenant advocacy work. We have watched people be evicted for simply being African-American or Hispanic within their own apartment complex or housing addition. We have watched families live in apartments filled with mold and feces all over their walls while their children play with their toys, breathing it in every single day. I've personally watched property managers and slum lords create extra barriers for poor families to thrive. I've personally witnessed property managers retaliate and force their own signatures on court documents for reporting them to corporate or to the health department, which shows that this is deeper than people not just paying their rent. Evictions have a direct correlation with the increase of violence, trauma, poverty, and homelessness in our communities. They do not know their rights. They are being mistreated and bullied. I deal with these cases every single day. So answer this. Why are people fighting against tenants, why are people fighting against tenants knowing their rights if they're treating them the right way in the first place? It shouldn't be a problem, right? I mean, the landlords know their rights. Then why can't these poor residents know them as well? We talk about addressing the root problems, and this is one of them. And I pray, as we organize our tenants to fight for their rights, that you all would stand with us in solidarity to restore hope and peace back into these tenants' lives. Thank you.
Mr. President and members of the council, my name is Amy Nelson. I'm the Executive Director of the Fair Housing Center of Central Indiana. The center is a nonprofit organization with a mission to ensure equal housing opportunities for all by eliminating housing discrimination. The center supports passage of both Proposals 40 and 41 on this drastically needed housing initiative. The Fair Housing Center hears far too often from tenants who are experiencing significant habitability problems, who fear, who have experienced retaliation for trying to address these problems, those that do not have adequate representation in court, who struggle to find affordable or accessible housing for their families, or who experience the harms of discrimination. I am incredibly proud of our city for taking this bold step forward by publicly showing its support that more needs to be done to address tenant housing issues in our community. Thank you to the city for being a state leader in this arena by putting funds toward court representation and working to address the retaliation that occurs by housing bad actors far too often. I also appreciated Mayor Hoxette's and council members' comments that this is part of a broader conversation about housing needs because everyone deserves safe, affordable, accessible housing free from discrimination. Thank you to everybody who made this happen, and we hope we will have your support tonight.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Rob Evans. I'm an Executive Vice President with the Indianapolis Neighborhood Housing Partnership, you might notice, as INHP. At INHP, we believe that all residents of Indianapolis should have the opportunity to live in a safe and decent home. We believe in arming people with the information necessary to be informed consumers. The proposal before you will help ensure that all renters within our city will be given access to the necessary information to be informed consumers that understand their rights and responsibilities as tenants and how to exercise those rights. INHP is in full support of both proposals before you. Thank you.
President Ossley, members of council, my name is Mandala Moyo. I'm the Director of Community Engagement for AARP Indiana, representing a little over 100,000 members here in Marion County, many of whom are longtime renters. We stand in support of Proposal 40 and Proposal 41 because of what it means to be able to inform and educate older residents and older renters as they continue to age in place. We were extremely disappointed by the actions taken by our friends at the State House today, but are committed to ensuring that we're able to continue to provide a safe, inhabitable place for all residents regardless of age or renter or ownership status. And so we look forward to your support for Proposal 40 and 41 this evening.
Brendan Beaver, Mike Chapparone, and Reverend David Berry.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Brendan Beeler. I'm the Director of the Housing Law Center at Indiana Legal Services. I'm here to briefly speak on how these proposals will affect our clients. Our attorneys help hundreds of Marion County tenants each year regarding housing issues, and the largest issue and gap that we see is that tenants do not know, nor do they have access to information regarding their rights. This ordinance attempts to fill that information gap. Indianapolis is in the midst of an eviction crisis, and we see it with our clients at ILS every day. In her most recent State of the Judiciary Address, Chief Justice Rush discussed her experience of observing a day in landlord-tenant court here in Marion County, and her biggest takeaway was the imbalance between landlord- takeaway was the imbalance between landlords and tenants. Most landlords had an attorney; the majority of tenants did not. And it was clear that tenants in Indianapolis are in need of guidance to help level this playing field, and again, we see this every day with our clients. Moreover, Matthew Desmond, who wrote the groundbreaking book Evicted States, "When tenants have lawyers, their chances of keeping their homes increases dramatically. Establishing publicly funded legal services for low-income families in housing court would be a cost-effective measure that would prevent homelessness, decrease evictions, and give poor families a fair shake." The most important benefit our clients would see from these proposed measures is receiving information. This includes information regarding their rights and obligations as they face circumstances where the conditions of their rental units deteriorate. In the last few moments, and you know, in a case that came to my mind when trying to point out specific clients, I had a case a few months ago where a woman was being evicted because the landlord put on the notice of claim that the Health Department had cited her apartment. And the problem with this is that, long story short, I was able to get the case because I was there as an advocate, but also this eviction's on her record forever, and she still faces the consequences from that today and can't find affordable housing. So in sum, this is about information. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Mike Chaperon from Family Promise of Greater Indianapolis. We're a homeless shelter for kids and their families. On my first day working at the shelter, maybe a second day, I don't know, I started covering the phones because I wanted to see the callers or hear the callers that phoned in. The first time it rang, I don't know, 8:30 in the morning or so, it was a male voice said, "Do you have room for me and my children?" "No, I'm sorry, we don't. We're actually full at eight families right now. But you could call 211 to learn what other options are there." "Okay, thanks." Then another call, "Hi, do you have room for me and my kids?" Female voice. "No, we're full, but you could try 211 for other options." About five more calls exactly like that in the next 10 minutes. Then probably after about half an hour, a young female voice called. I said, "Mike, Family Promise, how can we help you? Do you got space today?" "No, I'm sorry, we're full, but you could call 211 for other options." "I've called you for a week. I've called Dayspring. I've called Holy Family. You're all full. You've been full for two weeks. When are you going to have a space?" "I don't know. You could try us tomorrow." Eight, click, hung up. We turn away 10 families a day. In summer, we turn away 30 families a day. The other family shelters would tell you the same exact thing. Why? Because what you probably all know by now is what we didn't know at the time until Matt Desmond's groundbreaking work is we have the second-most evictions in the nation, second to New York City. We got more evictions in this city than Chicago, LA, and Topeka combined, combined! And you're asking us shelters in this city to carry the weight of it and carry the load like Wheeler and Dayspring and Holy Family? We can't anymore. Many tenants don't pay their rent, and an eviction might be the recourse that our society creates, and I understand that. But 20% or so of the tenants that come to our shelter after nine months of bouncing around to family and friends and not being able to get back on their feet, they have a just case where lawyers could have helped them. The 80%, that's an affordable housing crisis, but 20% are because of our laws. So everybody with a sign here, can you hold them up real quick? There are volunteers who opened up their churches and synagogues, I might add, synagogues for all those who prayed in Jesus' name today. They opened up their congregations to say, "We want to host homeless families. Change it at the legal level, please, to help us out." Thank you for this effort.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the council. My name is David Berry, and I'm associate pastor at Second Presbyterian Church and one of the partners that house homeless families for family promise. I also help to administer a program at our congregation called URAP, which is Utility Rent Assistance, and every day I run into families who are needing help with rent, and we spend $40,000 to $50,000 trying to keep people in housing and out of eviction. And I know that there are many that could benefit from legal assistance to help them to stay in housing and not fall into that cycle of homelessness and unemployment and poverty that evictions can sometimes bring about. In my tradition, there's a concept of governance that we govern following decency and order. And I think these proposals that I support, 40 and 41, help us to govern with decency and order. Decency being transparency, above-board visibility, ethical action, and justice. And 40 will help us to ensure that there is transparency and ethical practice and justice by supporting the legal community in defense of tenants. Order was the first act of God in bringing order out of chaos, and these two proposals will help to eliminate the chaos that is reigning in our community because of unjust eviction. It will bring order to our society, which is a fundamental practice of government. You are charged to make our community both decent and orderly. These proposals, and particularly 41, that fights against retaliation, is a proposal for decency, that no one is retaliated for exercising their rights. It's a proposal for order for people that are living in condemned housing, in housing that does not have furnaces that work. There is an eviction that is in support of the tenants called constructive eviction. And the way we are operating right now, the tenants don't have the opportunity to fully take advantage of constructive eviction where they will not have an eviction on their record if they're living in unsafe conditions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Recognizing that they have served as the primary opponents of our proposals before us tonight, is anyone from the Apartment Association available to answer a question or two? Anyone at all from the Apartment Association? Mr. President, I'd say it's telling that after testifying in committee, the Apartment Association spent their day at the other end of Market Street trying to take the authority of our city away, when we're seeking information for tenants, fairness for tenants, legal representation for tenants, and protection for retaliation. Friends don't always have to agree, but they do have to show up. And I believe if the Apartment Association wants to get something done in this city, they should come to us and not the State House. Thank you.
Are there any additional comments from councilors? Counselor Potts.
Thank you, Mr. President. This challenge affects our entire city, but I would be remiss if we did not call attention to the fact, as many of our guests did tonight, that this is a housing issue that disproportionately affects communities of color. And so I would like to cite Proposal Number 85 from earlier this evening. Whereas minority populations in Indianapolis are overrepresented in the city's population of homeless persons, whereas Blat and Latinx residents comprise one-fifth of Central Indiana's population, but only a tenth of home loan applicants are twice as likely to be denied a mortgage as white applicants, and half as likely to own a home. This language, which was passed unanimously by this body here tonight, compels me to play my part in addressing these inequities, and I hope my colleagues will join me in supporting Proposal Number 40. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to start off by saying I think the people who have a little bit of heartache with this issue, with this proposal, is not about getting the tenants their rights and notices of their rights and giving them that information. I think where a lot of us have the issue is we're almost putting the landlords in a guilty until proven innocent scenario with the courts for a retaliation of evicting a potentially delinquent or destructive tenant. You know, $250,000 is not a lot of money in a billion-dollar budget, but I worry about this being a stepping stone of additional asks for additional unfunded mandating, unmandated funding, and then coming back and asking for more and dipping their hand back in the pot again and again. I think we could have worked towards this in the coming year or even in last budget season to ensure this is budgeted for and properly accounted for. But again, I don't think this is an issue of getting tenants their rights and a notice of their rights. I think this is more so a worry of now we're fining landlords for a potential delinquent or destructive tenant that is not paying their rent or tearing up the property. And I think that's where we are having a little bit of heartache with this, and for that reason, I will also, I will be voting no on this tonight. Thank you.
Counsel Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think one of the things that I've not heard a lot about is the impact to an unstable home life to young people. I know that when kids are in school and they're constantly having to move from one place to a friend's house, to a grandparent's house, to a shelter, back to another friend's house, they're changing schools so often in a single school year, it creates that instability and makes it impossible for them to learn. And I think that we ought to make sure that we're having that discussion as well, especially as we talk about the effects of young people and their communication with each other. So I hope my colleagues will remember those young people as they vote today.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any additional comments from councilors? Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not only is Indianapolis number two in the nation for evictions, but the city of Lawrence, which is the majority of my district resides inside, is 41st in the nation for evictions. So not only is this a problem that we're seeing as the whole county, but our excluded cities are also facing. I spoke with the superintendent of Lawrence Schools this week or last week about this issue, and he said that's the number-one issue that his kids are facing, is that their parents are not able to maintain housing. So we need to do everything we can, if we're talking about not just a better Indianapolis four months from now, four years from now, but 40 years from now, is to make sure that we're giving children a safe and stable place to live. So I would urge everyone to vote yes on this today.
Yeah, I've just had two quick points to make. One, going back to the social economics of how this is going to help. Our communities grow. When I look at this, I say, "Do I want community or do I want chaos?" And I know that if we can help people stay in homes and maintain homes within our community, that we're going to be better off in the long run. So with that, I support 41. On the other hand, when I look at the appropriations, this is a plan that could have taken time over the year to put this together, I'm sure. When the budget was put together last year, it would have been nice to put this appropriation in, also considering the fact that Mr. Griffin stated it appropriates $210,000 to the Indiana Legal Services, something they've been working with since 2018. So the thought of that has been around for a while. So while I do not support 40, I do support 41 and what it can bring for our community.
Counselor Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. Been in a pretty bad mood today. I got a phone call earlier today and learned about the opposition on the other side of Market Street. And I kind of found it funny because I was thinking to myself, there's been an awful lot of talk lately about the violence in our city and the crime. Do you know what contributes to that? Housing instability and putting people out on the street. A little boy or a little girl having to be told by their mother or father, "We've got to move," and they have no hope, and they're raised and they're brought up in that environment, and they see what happens, and no hope contributes to more violence. So it's extremely frustrating to hear some of this about the financing and things of that nature, because just a short few weeks ago, we wanted to have commissions and everything else to figure out how we could invest more and do more for our city. It starts right here with a yes vote on both of them.
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, thank you, Counselor Evans, for your statements, but I will remind everyone that a commission does not cost anything but your time. So funding can be discussed in a different manner, but the commission we wanted to start was cost nothing but time, just to make sure we're clear there. I did have a question, though, with what's happening on the other end of Market Street, and someone might be able to clarify this, but what happens with these funds if July hits and SB 340 goes into effect and makes this ordinance no?
Counsel Kim or CFO Hall?
Mr. President?
Might you have some suggestions?
I think Mr. Giffen wants to come back to speak to that at your permission.
Very good.
Please, thank you.
If you can answer that question. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. If SB 340 passes as it's currently constituted, Proposal 41 would be essentially null and void. Proposal 40 would not, and we would go forward with assisting tenants with their legal assistance under these two projects. And I don't think anything about the state legal landscape change would affect our ability to appropriate funds in that manner. The notice of rights and the retaliation protection would go out the door, however.
Thank you. Address your question.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giffen. Any additional comments, councilors? Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would, on that note, like to take a moment to urge everyone in attendance, everyone watching, to contact the people at the other end of Market Street and let them know how you feel about this issue.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just to dovetail onto what Counselor Brown had mentioned, I know we just had a recent city election, and I do know that one of the candidates who was running for mayor of the city of Indianapolis holds a pretty high rank in the Indiana Senate, and I'm hopeful that the newfound affection we realized during the election for the city of Indianapolis will be expressed by Senator Merritt to his colleagues as he defends the city of Indianapolis and our ability to not only defend our residents from unfair treatment in the housing industry, but also the independence to make laws for our own residents. Thank you.
All right, councilors, seeing no further comment, we'll proceed to the board for our The motion carries 18 to 5, and I do believe we have one abstention. Is that correct? Okay, very good. 18 to 5, one abstention. Thank you, councilors. There is no business under special orders, unfinished business, and there is no business under special orders, there is business under special orders final adoption. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 33, referred to metropolitan economic development. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 33, refer to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 33 approves amounts, locations, and operations of certain projects to be funded from the Community Development Grant Funds. Director Emily Mack and Jenny Foltz, Administrator of the Division of Community Investments, DMD, gave a brief presentation making the following key points regarding the grant funds. The Community Development Block Grant, known as CDBG, approximately $92 million annually. The funds are used to provide decent housing, secure suitable living environment, and expand economic development opportunities for individuals earning 80% or below the area medium income. The Home Investment Partnership Program, or the Home Grant, approximately $33.9 million annually, used to expand the availability of decent, affordable housing for individuals earning 80% or below of MFI. The Emergency Solution Grant, also known as ESG, we're looking at approximately $780,000 annually, used to provide supportive housing services, homeless prevention, operating support to area shelters, and the rapid rehousing program. And last, the housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, also known as HAPWA, approximately $1.4 million annually. These funds are used to provide housing assistance and supportive services to persons with HIV AIDS. This plan priorities include sustainable neighborhoods, inclusive neighborhoods, and promising neighborhoods. DMD allocates roughly $4 million in CDBG home funds over three years for purposes of homeownership, rental housing, economic development, creative placemaking, and infrastructure improvement. Several questions were asked, and several constituents did speak in support of Proposal Number 33. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 9 to 0 to 2, but Counselors Brown and Jones abstaining. Mr. President, ISO move.
The motions are properly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? Counsel Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to abstain from this vote.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also need to abstain from this vote.
All right, very good. Thank you. Any additional comments from counselors? Vote on 33. All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 22 yeas with two abstentions. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 41, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 41, 2020, requires landlords to give tenants notice of their rights and responsibilities to connect tenants to legal assistance where necessary, to vindicate their rights and avoid eviction, to protect tenants from retaliation for exercising their rights, and to prohibit discrimination against applicants for housing based on expunged or sealed criminal convictions. Again, Mr. President, this was a companion to Proposal 40, and this too passed out of With Counsel Barf moving, Counsel Oliver seconded, passed as amended. The motion carried by a vote of 7, 3 to 1, with Counselors Holliday, Mallory, and May casting negative votes, and Counsel Booth abstaining from voting. Mr. President, it passed out of committee. ISO move.
The motions improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 19 yeas, four nays, and one abstention. The next item on our agenda is Announcements and Adjournment. The doctored agenda for this meeting for counsel, having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President? Mr. President, I have been asked by the following for the motion of adjournment by Counselor Holliday, in memory of Scott Kiphart, Rich Wyatt, and Charles W. Alber, by all counselors, in memory of Emmett Bowman, by Counselor Adamson, in memory of Kurt Allen and James Stewart, by Counselor Evans, in memory of Glenn Johnson and Lois Martin, by Counselor Ray, in memory of Kevin Joy, by Counselor Mascary, in memory of Richard Greenfield, Kitty Thomas, and Mary Jeanette Males, by Counselor Potts, in memory of Charlie Chinowitz, by Counselor Evans and Boots, in memory of Ashok Kumar, by Counselor Mallory, in memory of Vincent Rizdon, by Counselor Gray, in memory of Laura Della Francis Gerton. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City-City Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have specifically named. I respectfully ask the support of fellow counselors. I further request that the motion be made a part of the permanent records of the body and that a letter bearing the counsel's seal and the signature of the president be sent to each family and each family and person advising this action.
Thank you, Counselor Mallory. Hearing no objections, this motion is received, and the requests are so ordered. Hearing no further motions, we are adjourned.